Good evening. I'd like to call the December 3, 2020 West Sacramento Planning Commission Meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening. We continue to meet via teleconference, assurance of the Governor's Executive Order N2920, by which members of the Planning Commission and staff are participating via live video conference to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Members of the public have been invited to walk to the meeting via web cable on our local Channel 20 or streaming online through the city's website. Tonight's agenda and all agenda item materials are available on the city's website on the Planning Commission page. All public comments submitted by 5:00 PM to the Planning Commissioner Clerk are available for consideration and are also posted on the city's website along with the agenda and link to the live streaming video of this meeting, so that all planning commissioners and community members can see the complete text and submittal information. The Planning Commissioner Clerk will note the commenters for each item. So with that, we will proceed with tonight's agenda. First item up is General Administration Function Presentation by public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests or comments on items not on the agenda?
There are no comments on this item.
Okay. We will move on then with correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commissioner Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
I don't have any specific correspondence for you at this time, but I would like to have a minute or two of the commission's time once we get to informal discussion.
Okay. I noted, I have a feeling we're going to have a longer than normal informal discussion. And last item on General Administration Function is Disclosure of Ex parte Communications. At this time, planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on the agenda items. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the Consent Agenda, Consideration and Approval of the Minutes from the November 19, 2020 Commission Meeting. I'll move. Moved by Commissioner Castillo.
Second.
Second in by Commissioner Sternfels. Mr. Clerk, can you please call vote?
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfeld.
Aye.
Chair Leving.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. With that, coming along, and we will move on to the regular agenda. So item on the regular agenda this evening is Public Hearing Regarding Consideration of Resolution 20-14 PC for the Sixth Cycle Housing Element Update. And with that, I'm going to first ask Mr. Mr. Secretary, Mr. Clerk, if there are any comments from the public on this item.
There are no comments from the public on this item.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Ortega for staff presentation.
Okay, thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. So tonight, I have prepared a very brief presentation for the commission. And of course, once that is concluded, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. So, Mr. Secretary, if we can get that presentation on the screen, please. Okay. Thank you. So first, I'd, let's see here, oh, this is the, sorry, this is the first screen. Can we move the slide to the second screen, please? Second slide. Thank you very much. So first, I'd like to just begin by noting that throughout the process of the Housing Element Update, the focus on the theme in the general plan of complete communities and healthy communities was of course paramount to the overarching framework that we outlined in the Housing Element Update that is proposed to the commission tonight. The Housing Elements Focus is on the city's housing policies for the next eight-year planning period, but the policies and goals outlined in our Housing Element Update document do of course intersect in various ways with other important pieces of creating more complete communities for West Sacramento. So while there are many housing programs and policies outlined in the Housing Element Draft Document presented to you tonight, again, one of the pillars of this document is to make progress on addressing the ways in which housing development in the city impacts our vision of complete and healthy communities for West Sacramento. Next slide, please. So this here is a summary of our previous meeting and presentation with the commission. So here, I've outlined some of the feedback that we received from the commission two weeks ago. And you'll notice and see in the next slide some of the changes that were made since our last meeting that are now included in today's version of the draft documents. Next slide, please. So this here are some of the changes that were made to the document since we last met. We did take care to include details regarding access to healthy foods and healthcare services in that policy number 1.16. We also finalized the survey results and included a summary of our virtual public meeting that was held last month. And we also did include details about the Project Home Key Program. And that program will house a number of our communities homeless and at-risk population for a minimum of five years. And lastly, here, we reached out to one of our at-risk affordable housing properties to ensure that their rooms remain affordable going forward and that they are renewing their project-based rental assistance voucher with the federal government. Next slide, please. So we will be coming back to the commission with updates to other general plan elements in the near future. The commission can plan to see revisions to the mobility elements specifically to address and maintain consistency between circulation and the circulation diagrams in the Pioneer Bluff Stone Lock Reuse Master Plan and the general plan. And secondly, the commission can plan to see in the future an update to the safety elements, and that will include more specifics regarding those climate adaptation and resiliency strategies that are being written along with the Climate Action Plan. And the work on both of these revisions will begin next year. Next slide, please. So this is the final slide here, and this is the schedule update and what's next for the Housing Element Update Project. City Council will see the item next month, and we will submit to the state for review and eventual adoption of the documents in the spring. And so that concludes my presentation. Happy to, of course, answer any questions that arise. And the recommendation from staff is that the commission vote to approve Resolution 20-14. Thank you.
Thank you, Elijah. So with that, I'm going to, I actually need to open up the public hearing. We have no, no requests to speak or comments at this time, but I did need to open it. So, and just so I don't forget, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and bring us back to the commission for additional comments and directions to staff. And this is, this is a vote tonight on a resolution. Mr. Sternfels.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make a few quick comments on the item before us. One, a deep gratitude I want to share with city staff on what I think is, again, really tremendous work on this product. Mr. Ortega, you've been fantastic in your communication with us from the first meeting of our subgroup with the Housing and Economic Development Commission, and you've been very responsive to all of our requests for feedback and input and helped us understand and learn along the way. So I thank you for that, Mr. Huerta, the same. I know you're a behind-the-scenes maneuverer, but I really appreciate your dedication and commitment and support throughout this entire process. I think the product that is before us tonight is not only comprehensive but incredibly thoughtful and really has something in it for everyone. It also takes into account a variety of different perspectives from across our city, which I think is really important, particularly as we move forward from here. So I just want to thank you all and say that I'm really proud of the work that you all did, that we got to be a part of, and look forward to supporting it tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sternfels. Anyone else?
I don't think anyone can really add too much more to what Commissioner Sternfels said. I thought that was really wonderful and concise. And then I'll just acknowledge to the consultant team, A Comms Team led by Jeff Goldman. So thank you all for really excellent work, city staff and consultants. And also, I think you made ludi to this too, but thank you for the folks who took their time to participate in this as, you know, people who are experts, residents and other stakeholders. So thank you all.
Yes, in addition to staff and the consultant team, I definitely wanted to also thank our Housing Subcommittee, Mr. Sternfels, Vice Chair Austin, and Commissioner Berliner. So thank you, thank you so much. I have additional comments, but I wanted, since we're on the thank yous, I want to throw that in.
Chair Leving, I just have some questions of staff, very quick ones.
Go right here.
Okay. I'm not sure if this would be a Mr. Tilly question or not, but when it comes to the inclusionary housing component of our policies here, how different are the recommendations here for both new, sorry, new ownership projects and new rental projects? How, how much, how similar are these recommended policies with our existing policies in the city?
Raul, do you want to chime in on that one?
Yeah, definitely. So the, the inclusionary housing policies didn't change much from the last housing element. Our inclusionary housing ordinance went through a significant change in 2014. And we were going through the last, the previous Housing Element Update cycle at the same time. So we took the opportunity to make those, those modifications. For this cycle, we have not changed anything that would change the way that the program is being, being run or being administered. We are in the process of taking an amendment to the Urban Infill Area Incentive of the Housing Trust Fund Program, which is part of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance to the council next week. It's not, it doesn't affect the housing element because that gets into more specific administrative aspect of the program, but the policy itself remains the same.
So when, the implementation of the policy here, there's an alternative that new projects can contribute to the Housing Trust Fund. And how, it says it's determined on a project-by-project basis. So I'm wondering how, how that's determined each time? And I ask only out of the spirit of understanding, you know, as we try to clear the barriers for new projects to come forward so that they know that they can rely on entitlements in a timely manner, approvals of building permits and other processing things in a timely manner without too much, you know, bureaucratic slowdown, for lack of any better terminology, that they also know what their costs are upfront and they know what they're facing before they even, you know, say, bring a proposal to the city. They're able to calculate those things just as they would trying to calculate, you know, impact fees beforehand. Can you just help me understand that a little bit and just explain, you know, any salient point to that effect?
Yes, definitely. So the ordinance has specific requirements for actual unit production. And if a developer follows those production requirements, an affordable housing agreement is executed between the city and the developer. It doesn't require any additional formal action by the city council. The, the city manager approves that because it's following what the inclusionary housing ordinance requires in terms of unit production. We do have in the ordinance an alternative section that any developer can propose, and that includes payment of an in-lu fee. So anytime a developer proposes one of those alternatives, whether it's a payment of an in-lu fee, dedication of land, or any other form of meeting the affordable housing requirements of Chapter 1540, then we do have to go to the council for formal approval. That's what is taken on a case-by-case basis. So we typically sit down with a developer, discuss what they are proposing, draft our housing element, but ultimately, it's the council who decides whether they want to approve or not that alternative that is being proposed.
I see. And is there a ballpark number for the in-lu fee that we know or that's within a range?
Yes, so that in-lu fee is updated every year. The in-lu fee takes, takes effect every first of the year. It is published on our, on our website, on the housing website. So we do have a set fee for developers who wish to inquire or propose that they pay the in-lu fee.
Okay, that's what I was getting after, just because the way it was worded in this, that on a project-by-project basis that the fee would be determined. And I thought that, that seemed odd, that you would just have arbitrary fee assignments with each application. But knowing that it's an annual fee that's revised, totally understandable, and that satisfies what my question was getting after. Thank you very much.
Sure, yeah, and it may have been an issue of how it's worded, but again, the case-by-case is, is the actual proposal by the developer. The fee, it's, the fee itself is fixed, again, gets adjusted every year based on, on an index, engineering, construction cost index, I believe. So that is fixed every year. Again, it's the actual proposal and how they want to meet that requirement that needs to be taken on a case-by-case basis.
Nice, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Ortega.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Any additional comments, questions? This, so this document has been through the Housing and Economic Development Commission as well as been before the Planning Commission during a prior workshop. There was a lot of discussion at the prior workshop with a lot of comments directed towards staff, and it appears that the document has been updated. So again, I definitely commend staff for all the work that they've done on this. There's an amazing amount of information in the document, and I, I found it interesting that it, I think it identifies successes that we've made over the past years as, as we've grown as a city, but it also has identified many of obstacles and challenges that we still face. The document definitely highlights the diversity in our city and our community and the diversity of our housing needs. I just do want to reiterate one thing, because it's tied to this. A lot of the work that we've done and the challenge that we face to, to build on our diversity, improve housing numbers, those depend on our transit-oriented development, the success of transit-oriented development, and that depends on our transportation plans. So the two go hand in hand. A lot of the projects we've approved recently depend on transit options, and I know those are carefully being considered at the same time. So just wanted to call that out to make sure that we keep that in mind as this continues to move forward into 2021. So with that, I think, I think I don't see any more comments, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to, to approve staff recommendation.
Moved by Commissioner Sablon.
A second.
Okay, go ahead.
Seconded by Commissioner Leonard. Mr. Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Sternfels.
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonard.
Aye.
Commissioner Sablon.
Aye.
Commissioner Austin.
Aye.
Commissioner Berliner.
Aye.
Chair Leving.
Aye. All right, thank you so much. Thank you again, staff, and this item will be seen in January 2021 with the newly seated city council. All right, moving forward, we are going to General Administration Function Part Two, which is Informal Discussion. So any, any items anybody would like to bring at this point? We'll start with Ms. Berliner.
I just want to say thank you to everybody for just this year. It's, it's been rough. It's, it, I'm not going to lie, it's been rough, but I just want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners and city staff for just doing an amazing job and making, making this work when I honestly didn't think it was possible. But I just think, thank you, and I hope everyone has, I'm assuming this is our last meeting. Everyone has a good holiday and a happy new year, and here's hoping that 2021, we can be in person. So thank you.
Those are lovely sentiments, and I really appreciate what you just said, Commissioner Berliner. So every year, you know, Russ and I have, I think, been the longest-serving on this commission, I think. And you, you, we never know, you never know how appointments are going to go. And so if this is indeed our last meeting, I second that. I think that people did a really good job of doing their homework, reading the packets, doing their best to be not just informed but also really receptive to the public comment from our residents and stakeholders and applicants. So thank you very, very much for really just doing, I think, really doing a wonderful civic service.
Thank you, Vice Chair Austin. Mr. or Commissioner Sternfels, did you have comments this evening?
Sure, why not? Since you asked. You know, not, not to get overly repetitive, but this could be the last, this is, this very well could be the last time this group is together in this forum. And I, I do want to say that, you know, in my time getting to serve on here, it's been a privilege and that one of the things I'm most proud of is not that we just listen to the folks in the community that were able to show up and express an opinion or write a letter, but that we also listen to what we believed was right based on facts and, and really good staff recommendations and knowledge from staff experts who dedicate their lives to the topics that we often get to see in front of us. And I'm really proud that, you know, we consistently and largely unanimously made really good decisions together for what was best for the city. And I'm, I'm proud of that, and it's something that, you know, regardless of whether we're having this meeting next month together or not, you know, will something, be something we can all take with us for a really long time. And so I just, I also want to thank every one of you. It's been a privilege getting to know all of you and work with you, and we've had a really great group. And, and while we haven't been able to interact the way we normally would this past year, we've made it work, and that's been a team effort by all of us and a commitment from all of us to stick with this and figure it out together, and I'm grateful for that. And then finally, I'll just say to David, you know, and the rest of the staff, that it's, this is, it's been a lot of fun, and I know that I've been a total thorn in the side to you sometimes, but it's been out of the same love and appreciation that we have for the city and wanting to do what's right at the end of the day. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to work with you and your entire team. I think you guys are fabulous, and you made it easy for us more often than not, which is not an easy feat with this group, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sternfels. Any other comments before Mr. Tilly or myself? Okay, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Based on results of tonight's action on the housing element, which is a critical piece of policy, no more critical than now, this will be our last meeting for the year. And so I do want to thank each and, each and every one of you for your service during your two years. This most recent two-year term for some of you and, and for our newer commissioners. I hope you got it, I hope you got a good impression from this experience, and you'll want to continue serving our, our city, you know, one way, one way or the other. This obviously has been an upside-down year. I, for one, am very proud of how we made the transition to doing the meetings on Zoom, and we kept our, kept our projects going. Our applicants, you know, have, you know, they, they deserve their chance to get up to the Planning Commission as, as, you know, within as reasonable amount of time as we can. So I want to give a lot of credit to all the folks involved, especially Ben, who's been behind the scenes and running, running these meetings. I don't even know exactly they have and how he does that, but running it on the backend, we've had, I would say, minimal glitches this whole time. And so I'm proud of everyone and how this, how this has gone this year since we had to switch over to virtual and doing our meetings this way. So again, half of me and my staff and city attorney's office and all the other city staff that contribute to Planning Commission, either in person or in the staff reports, we're very grateful for all of you. We've had a good year in this forum, and I certainly hope to see all of you back, back on Planning Commission, you know, next year, but we'll wait and see on that. But again, thank you all very much for everything you have done this year, especially this year with everything else going on outside, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. I definitely want to echo some of those sentence, sentiments without, without diving in too deep. I certainly want to call, call out all the work that Mr. Tilly has done to organize these meetings and then behind the scenes, pushing lots of buttons to make sure that this virtual setting can continue. I do hope that as we move into 2021, it does look like we're going to be continuing with the virtual setting. I hope that we continue to make improvements to engage with the community. This is a, it's a difficult platform. So I'm, I'm optimistic that as we continue with virtual, we can continue to make improvements. So I've, I've thoroughly enjoyed the last two years. I've enjoyed my time on this, on this commission. One thing that I hope, you know, some of the newer commissioners have learned is there is some level of longevity that is actually helpful because some of our, some of our projects just don't move that fast. And, and some of our policies take a long time to write, and a lot of our policies, separate policies are interrelated, and it does, it does take some effort to tie those all together. So I, I thank all of our newer commissioners for really diving in because it's a lot of work to learn the process, and of course, some of the more veteran commissioners for just continuing to do an outstanding job. So thank you, thank you all. With that, I will close tonight's public meeting, or Planning Commission meeting.
Was Mr. Tilly going to say something? Or did you cover what you want? I'm so sorry, Chair Leving.
I thought Mr. Tilly said something. That was not in my head.
I believe I did, and the only thing I forgot to say is I hope everyone has a great holiday.
And also, I apologize, I thought you were going to talk a little bit about the reappointment process. So there's traditionally how long it takes, and with the turnover with the mayor and council, it may take a little longer, but do you, do you want to let folks know when we might be reconvening? If we are reconvening as this group?
Honestly, I do not know. I can say fairly confidently, it will not be in January. Traditionally, it's been more like a February when we might be able to start up our first meeting of the new year, but we will see. Traditionally, it's been more like a February when we might be able to start up our first meeting of the new year, but we will see.
There are a couple of unusual steps this time that, that will be taken before commissions are likely appointed. But this is the, this is the last meeting of this year, which is the last meeting of potentially of, of this appointment. So I'm sure we will see each other in the future, be it on this commission or otherwise, because it is a small town, and we will continue to run into each other. So with, with that, I will close tonight's public, I'm sorry, I keep saying that, planning commission meeting. Happy holidays. Please say, stay safe, and thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Bye.